That would be Nina.
I'm gonna, I've already changed one, I'm retroactive.
Wait, you can only change it before the pre-meet. We need to make up.
Oh.
Seven twelve? Is that good?
Y'all have seven ten?
Seven oh five.
All those needing help have the guidance.
But you're leaving.
Okay.
The United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and eternal. That's a strong.
We do have a forum today, we're all, all are present. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting on September fifth?
Make a motion for your approval, men, uh, from previous meeting.
Secretary.
All in favor? Can I get a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda?
I'm moved.
Second? All in favor? Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on October first, two thousand twenty-four. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Stoller to obtain a request to speak for them. Any request with a public hearing will have a minimum of ten minutes per side for the presentation of opinions, data, and evidence by proponents or opponents of a request. The applicant will be allowed to speak first, any member of the public may speak after. Either side may cede their time during the hearing if they so desire. Montgomery.
Yes, sir, this first item is a plan revision in Jones Creek. It has been postponed from the August first and August fifteenth Planning Commission meetings, and this is in regards to the community pool area in Jones Creek, which is located at the end of Tyndall Drive and off Hammond's Ferry, and is currently zoned planned unit development, as is the rest of Jones Creek. Now, this shows the aerial of the existing pool area, uh, this shows the pool and the existing clubhouse, and a couple of views of the existing clubhouse there, and the site as viewed from Tyndall Drive. And kind of what started this request is a plan to replace that pool house on the site, uh, so the intent was to demolish and rebuild it. Uh, we do have some images here of the proposed new building and the new floor plan. Uh, and essentially, the issue here is that the existing site does not meet current county codes, uh, so it is a non-conforming property. Um, that's fine, it can stay that way, uh, until they do something along the lines of demolishing and rebuilding the pool house. At that point, we would ordinarily require the pool house to come into conformance with county code. That would require twenty-foot buffers against the adjacent residential properties and a twenty-five-foot building setback for the pool house, and a fifty-foot setback for the pool. Uh, now, you can see that the pool is within that setback, uh, for the pool itself, and then the, uh, pool house is also within that building setback and within the area that would normally be required to be a buffer. Uh, so the major revision was seeking to establish different development standards for this particular pool area in this development, uh, that were attainable on-site. Uh, so the site plan that we had for this, uh, showed a seven-foot building setback, um, and the eight-foot fence along the west property line to kind of accomplish some of the buffering intent, uh, without being able to meet that normal twenty-foot width. Uh, so this was the requested setbacks, uh, the seven-foot setback on that west side, and then fifteen feet along all the other property lines, and a twenty-foot setback for the pool itself. Uh, and that was to give some flexibility in case of future expansion, uh, there's no intent to expand the pool at this point, uh, but just in case, they were trying to give themselves a little bit of, of room there for, for future growth. Staff did have a, a set of proposed conditions that kind of modified those requirements, uh, essentially pushing the building setback to twelve feet from the west property line and, uh, twenty-five feet from the other property lines, uh, sorry, twelve feet from the, the parking lot side as well, uh, and doing, reducing the buffer down to ten feet on that west property line, uh, with the inclusion of the fence as originally proposed. Uh, we did not propose any reduction to the twenty-foot buffer along this, uh, property line against the currently vacant residential lot, uh, essentially that, but the vegetation part of that buffer is already in place, uh, so essentially, all they have to do is not clear that area, and then add the privacy fence, uh, when that house develops in the future. Uh, in terms of future development, this property is within the neighborhood's character area, uh, this is a amenity for the neighborhoods, it's a very common use in this, uh, type of development, uh, and in that respect, it does, uh, meet the future development map. Uh, so again, staff is recommending approval with the conditions that the minimum building setback could be twelve feet from the northwest and northeast property lines, and twenty-five feet from the other property lines, uh, that the minimum setback for the pool shall be thirty-five feet from all property lines, uh, that the structural buffer be reduced to the ten-foot structural buffer, uh, against forty-one sixty-five Tyndall Drive only, and that that buffer include the eight-foot tall privacy fence and landscaping, and that existing vegetation within the twenty-foot structural buffer adjacent to forty-one sixty Tyndall Drive, uh, remain in place with the fence part, so the structural buffer, uh, not being required until the house is constructed, so that eight-foot fence on that side would have to be installed final to prior, prior to final inspection of that house. Uh, you do also have, um, some revisions to the conditions as proposed by the applicant, as you all have those in front of you for reference as well, uh, but staff is recommending approval with these conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Uh, Mr. Nanny and Mr. Danny would you like to come forward?
Thank you, uh, good evening, I'm Trip Nanny, President of the Jones Creek Homeowners' Association. Jones Creek Pool House, approximately thirty-five years old, as we mentioned, the entire structure's in disrepair, the roof needs to be completely replaced, bathroom's not ADA compliant, in fact, we don't have doors, we have shower curtains, so there's very little privacy for anybody in either bathroom. Plumbing drains have been stopped up, the stucco has holes in it, most of all, our pump room needs to be enlarged to circulate and clean the water per the Georgia standards, as indicated by Elwine Pools. It's just old, not unlike this building you're sitting in, what are y'all doing? You're building right behind us, brand-new, and that's what we're trying to do, keep up with the times and build something. Y'all are proposing, or currently, the building is seven or ten, seven and ten, it's got an indention in the back that's seven feet off the property line, and the rest of it is ten feet, it joins that neighboring property. Your conditions are asking for twelve feet, we propose, as indicated in that email, I think September the sixth, that that setback be ten feet from that property line. We also proposed a couple of additional changes, I'm happy to read, but y'all have my email dated September the sixth. We were told in personal meetings with our Commissioner and some people on your board that the fence, uh, would be okay at six feet, so that's why we changed it to six feet. The buffer area, we don't mind, we'll do that, we'll plant the plants, however, keep in mind, one of the reasons those trees were removed initially is because of the roots that grow down there, right above the sewer and water lines, we plant something else there, there's a good chance that's gonna rehappen, but we'll plant it, that's what y'all asked for, and we agreed to do that. There's a leak under there currently that Columbia County Water Utilities doesn't know where it's coming from, they did find some cement in the line, that nobody knows where that came from either, so just keep that in mind when you're asking for vegetation or plants or landscaping along that area. Problems obviously could be on either side of the line. Our desire is to conform with the logistics of our building, and then we'll move forward with Columbia County Commissioners, zoning, building, engineering, any other entities that we have to deal with to get our final approval. We currently have very few options to replace this pool house based on the location and the size. Like I said, it's thirty-five years old, it was built without any restrictions or not, very little governing from Columbia County in conjunction with the neighborhood builder at that time. There were no houses bordering that pool when it was built, so that's another thing that's changed. We appreciate the concerns of our neighbors, uh, however, most of our Jones Creek residents have voiced favorable opinions of building the house, building the new pool house, and they want it. We've had continuous problems with plumbing, bathroom, deck space, overall, overall size of the pool area. In addition, now that we have a new owner of our clubhouse, we need to be able to work with them. Previously used that for meeting space, we no longer have meeting, our board has to meet in either a neighbor's house or some other area, which is not conducive to allowing our residents to attend our board meetings, which we'd like for them to do. That roof line, which you've shown, no more than two feet higher, but it very well could be one foot lower, by adding those dormers on the front side of the roof and just putting in a plywood floor in the walls, we can have a meeting space up there that could hold twenty-five or thirty people, which would be a great asset to our neighborhood, simply by changing the front side, it's not really gonna be a big change on the height of the roof line. Regardless, our goal is to improve the amenities in Jones Creek for everybody. Our pool house is a major entity, our pool is actually a revenue-producing facility for us, we make good money from non-resident pool members, concessions, et cetera, and we want to give those people what they're paying for, which is vastly improved on what we currently have. It's, uh, it's there, we're encouraging you guys, staff, to consider our changes and to make those proposals, or make those conditions that we proposed in our September the sixth, September the sixth.
My date is September fourteenth on here.
Sir?
My date on this letter is September fourteenth.
Is that?
Wednesday the fourteenth.
If, if it, four, four bullet points, starting with the setback to be ten feet?
Right here. But anyway, that's, not the point, I understand.
We're asking for the setback to be ten feet instead of twelve, we're saying the pool is fine at thirty-five feet, the structural buffer reduced to ten-foot along forty-one sixty-five Tyndall, and a six-foot privacy fence instead of eight, so that was a slight change. The landscaping and the fence will be within that ten-foot buffer. Uh, the landscaping plan will be included and submitted with the site plan once they are finalized, and the certificate, uh, prior to the certificate of occupancy being submitted, and then we're asking for the existing vegetation within that ten-foot structural buffer on the other side, forty-one sixty remain in place, that structural buffer should be installed prior to a house being constructed on that parcel, said structure must be installed prior to the final inspection of the proposed house, and include a six-foot privacy fence as well on that side. So we're basically asking for the same, the ten-foot buffer all the way around the property, we're gonna have to build fences anyway, so we'd like-
If we voted with staff's recommendation, is that a deal breaker for you and your association?
Potentially, because we're gonna lose, if we lose another two or three feet forward, we're gonna lose additional deck space, and it, it just, yeah, it changes the whole structure of the, the building. Uh, and not to mention, that's twenty-four by about forty, thirty, forty behind that building that is completely unusable to us, it's just dead space between the fence that's there now and the fence we're gonna have to build in the back of our building, it's just a lot of wasted property in our opinion, there's no, the property on that side is, is woods and trees, it's, that back part of our building is not adjacent to any residence, that residence is up in the front of the corner of that property off Tyndall Drive, as you can see. I'm not gonna say a deal breaker, but it's-
Time constraints too, right, you're trying to get this done before April.
Correct, yeah, if we can't get a pretty good guarantee, yeah, we're gonna open our pool in April, whether we build this house or not, if we can't have it done by April, then we will drop back and, uh, start construction next fall, as soon as we close.
I believe there's always a win-win, and, and I'm, I'm with you, I, I think, I think the, the recommendations from the planning office aren't unreasonable, I've been down there several times, and I've taken lots of measurements, um, so, I, I, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm in favor of an eight-foot buffer, or, or fence, I'm in favor of a twelve-foot, I think that recommendation is not unreasonable.
It's not, and we offered the, the eight-foot fence, but then when we met with you, we all said, is six-foot okay, and I think you said, yeah, that would be fine.
Well, I think the, the dictated, the case dictated, because you had another resident that had an eight-foot fence, right, and you're the one who said-
No, we said no, we told him he had to be six feet on the front side of that fence.
Oh, I remember, that's all right.
Well, all the fences, for the most part, are in Jones Creek are six feet, or they're supposed to be, uh, but, yeah, it, it's, the building is ten feet off the line now, some of it is seven feet, to come out an additional five feet from that takes away that, I mean, we're, we'll, you lose the ability to paddle patio chairs in front of our pool because of where the lifeguards have to sit and sign-in book and everything like that, so, yeah, I'm, I can't say for sure, but it, based on the plans, it, it, it might be a deal breaker, yeah.
I hate that for you. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone in the audience like to speak in favor of this major PUD revision? Anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition to this major PUD revision? State your name and your address, please, sir.
Hi, my name is Larry Carter, I live at forty-one sixty-five Tyndall Drive, right adjacent to the pool. First, um, I just wanna say thank you for your time and attention and effort you put into reviewing all this information, that was a lot of work, and, um, I really do appreciate that, um, and I think that the recommendations you made previously, um, are reasonable, I think it addresses both parties' concerns, I think, um, for that, um, I did not, I guess I wasn't in on the loop when, uh, they made some changes that wanted to go to eight-six-foot fence and, uh, dropped the twelve-foot setback to ten-foot, I, I was not informed of that till just now, so apparently, keeping me informed or having me involved in this process is not part of their plan, so that's, that's an issue, that's why, why I'm here. Couple things I did wanna address, I mean, like I say, I think that the plan revision that y'all came up with last time, I, I think that's reasonable, that I, I'm having to give some, it's, it's workable, and it is doable, but I ask that you would, the recommendations you initially made last meeting. A couple of minor issues, um, Mr. Nanny is planning a new second-story party room that has nothing to do with a pool house, has nothing to do with updating the bathrooms or making it better, um, having a larger, taller, second-story addition that close to my house does encroach on my privacy, which is why the county has ordinances restricting buildings too close to another home, and if this party room is included, external staircase according to their current plans, landing to the second floor should be required to be placed on the opposite side of the building next to the parking lot. The current plan that I've seen has a staircase three or four feet closer to my home beyond the current structure footprint. Compounding additional noise, light, and invasion of privacy having the stair landing overlooking my private bedroom and people going up and down the stairs, not, not acceptable. Moving the staircase to the opposite side would not affect the pool house party room in any way, and will eliminate the issues and concerns affecting my privacy. I'd also like to have the opportunity to review and provide input on the fence location and landscaping design, as it will directly impact me. Already have asked the groundsman landscaping company to draw up a fence and landscaping design options, and gave that to the builder, but I've not gotten any response or feedback from him concerning that. Lastly, I just wanna clarify that if the zoning variance is approved with the modifications, that it will not allow any structure to be built any closer to my home than the current pool house footprint. I'm very concerned that he will modify the new building and build it close to my home, and I just wanna make sure that any new construction only extends towards the parking lot or towards the pool away from my fence and not towards the cul-de-sac. You're the only thing protecting me and my property and my privacy, um, and I wanna make sure there's no loopholes or ambiguities that can be exploited. Once you make your decision, Mr. Nanny will proceed with this project, I will have no say or input, and will not be consulted in any way about his project, that's clear from his initial application, he responded to the question as to whether this project would negatively affect anyone, he wrote, "Not at all, not applicable, I don't even, I don't matter." It's also clear, my currents don't, my concerns don't matter to him, by the fact he has made no effort to contact or consult with me since the last zoning meeting, and an example of that is, I had no idea he would change it back to the six-foot fence or ten-foot setback, so that was, that's where I'm at, that's why I'm relying on your wisdom to make the right decision.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience like to speak in opposition to this major PUD revision? Come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Judy Brown, I live at four-one-six-six Tyndall Drive, I'm on the opposite side, just past the back there, I spoke at one of the other meetings, I'm not really changing any of that, but my concern right now is the meeting party room. Um, I know I asked Trip Nanny when he did have a, a meeting at the pool, and finally invited the neighborhood, um, I asked him, I said, "So is this gonna be ADA compliant, and you're gonna put an elevator?" Oh, no! Well, if you're gonna have a, a meeting room that's accessible for anybody in the neighborhood, why would you build one that's not ADA accessible, and you tell everybody that everything you're doing at the pool is ADA accessible, or what the requirements are, but if you're gonna have a meeting room in which you wanna invite anybody to, wouldn't you think it would be ADA accessible?
Not required. No, thank, thank you.
But my, my, my point is, though, is that you say everybody's welcome, and, you know, some of us are getting a little bit older, and you, and you, one of your key, the key features they pointed out was ADA accessibility for this new project, but that second floor, I don't even know why we need that second floor, sometimes they tell us it's revenue-producing, make more run, revenue if you collected money from people that pay ten, don't pay for the tennis courts, so, that's just my comment, um, but it's really related, I agree with what Dr. Carter said, but in addition-
Thank you so much. One else like to speak in opposition to this major PUD revision? Their motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to recommend with approval, recommend approval with conditions of file RZ twenty-four dash zero-eight dash zero-two, major PUD revision to adapt development standards, pool area at seven-eighty-five Jones Creek.
Second that motion.
All in favor? Motion carries? Douglas?
Do the preliminary plat first.
I'm sorry, Ms. Montgomery.
All right, uh, so our next item is the preliminary plat for Amana Village, located at four-thirty-five Old Evans Road, and this shows the location of the property on the west side of Old Evans Road, uh, near the intersection with Riverwatch Parkway, and it is currently zoned TR Townhouse Residential and has been since about two thousand and one. Uh, the plan is to develop a townhouse residential community on this property, it is sixty residential lots, uh, with a average lot size of one thousand six hundred and forty-four square feet, uh, the required setbacks are twenty feet from the front property line, fifteen feet from the rear property line, and zero feet between the units. Uh, there are buffers and landscape strips on all sides of the site, uh, which are included in a total of five-point-one-three acres of open space in this development, uh, that includes, uh, area with play equipment as required per the code, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. Questions? Their motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Amana Village Townhomes off Old Evans Road.
All in favor? Carries? Now, Mr. Douglas.
Yes, sir, this is an application for rezoning at one-two-three-eight Fury's Ferry Road, uh, for, um, from R-one to S-one special for a proposed telecommunications tower. Uh, this shows the proposed location, again, we're on Fury's Ferry Road north of the intersection with Hardy McManus Road, that's also the area that the telecommunications tower is aiming to serve, as we'll see more here in just a moment. Uh, the area is characterized, uh, by R-one development, just as this parcel already holds, uh, that means it is largely single-family residentially developed, as you can see right there, the, uh, S-one zoned property immediately to the north is for a, a church campus, that same church also owns the subject parcel of this application. This is an aerial of the site, um, some, uh, a minor aspect of this site that we think, uh, kinda helps its viability as a location for a telecommunications tower is that it's currently undeveloped and therefore largely wooded, uh, that tree cover is helpful when weighing the visual impact of a telecommunications tower. This is a plat for the property, and this is the proposed site plan, um, you can see a, a thirty-foot ingress and egress driveway that's proposed to the square that's outlined there, that is the lease area proposed for the telecommunications tower. Um, the applicants are aware that Fury's Ferry Road is a state-owned, uh, roadway, and that therefore they have to reach out to GDOT to get permission to develop that, uh, you know, driveway to access Fury's Ferry Road. This application is also the subject of the following variants, and we'll cover, uh, you know, why, uh, that is, uh, in that application. This shows the renditions of both the lease area, uh, site, as well as the tower itself, uh, elevations, again, everything is relatively standard, the site is secured in ways that are typically done, you know, six-foot fence with, uh, you know, anti-scaling measures at the top of the fence, everything is very normal for a telecommunications tower in this aspect for the site. Uh, this is, uh, propagation maps or coverage maps, um, an explanation included from the applicants explains that mid-band coverage pictured here, that's kind of the, you know, so, as low-band, mid-brand, mid-band and, uh, high-band coverage progresses, that means it's lower speed at a wider range at the low-band, and then mid-range is, you know, kind of the middle ground for the two of those, and so on. Um, so this mid-band coverage propagation map shows the service in the area, again, red is the best service, blue or uncolored is the, you know, least service, and so the area, you know, both within that circle, but then beyond that to the north, as you'll see as we keep flipping through these, is underserved currently, and the service has dramatically improved, you know, if the, uh, this application is approved and the tower is installed, uh, which is something important when weighing whether or not to approve a telecommunications tower's location. Again, this is low-band coverage showing the area, uh, served currently, as well as the improvements should the tower be approved. And then again, we're, uh, weighing, you know, the visual impact of the tower on the surrounding area compared to the service rendered, we just reviewed the service rendered, and this here is, uh, you know, uh, photo simulations of the tower from different locations, we did have a map showing where these pictures are taken, uh, this one specifically on the right is from, uh, if we could go back one slide, sorry, the one on the left here is from the immediately adjacent church campus, and then on the next slide, uh, one on the right is from the opposite adjacent parcel, so those are the two closest photo simulations that we have that show the tower most clearly. All the rest of these that have been taken are from along north and south along Fury's Ferry Road, so it is viewable from that roadway, however, in all the locations that photo simulations were taken inside residential developments, the tower was either unviewable at all, or this one on the right, right here, shows from a, a, a residential development around the corner on Hardy McManus Drive, again, even though the tower is technically viewable, it's through a tree line, and so, uh, weighing that visual impact on the surrounding area, uh, again, it's, uh, the character area on the future development map is neighborhoods, again, that is pretty obvious from the zoning map as well, this area is largely single-family residential, but that allows for civic uses, so, you know, services such as this telecommunications tower, which would, you know, uh, increase the quality of life in this area, uh, so, given that we're weighing that visual impact compared to the service rendered, uh, staff is comfortable approving the rezoning for this location for a telecommunications tower.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Godwin, like to come forward and-
How's everyone doing tonight?
Good, man.
As, uh, Mr. Douglas stated, uh, I'm with Next Edge Networks, we are a, um, pre-development service company for, um, a particular, um, tower owner in this case would be Skyway Towers, uh, I'm here on behalf of them tonight, and, uh, acquisition engineering, and construction services for wireless industry.
Like, there's definitely coverage needed.
Yeah, uh, it absolutely is, and, uh, and this one is, um, oh, how we would classify this would be a build-to-suit, so, Skyway partnered with T-Mobile for this tower, so T-Mobile is the, you know, that'll be going on, um, once this, as soon as the site is built, T-Mobile will be on, providing service for them, it's just not an empty tower that's gonna be built, and waiting for someone to own it.
Thank you.
It's just, but anybody could lease space, not just T-Mobile.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's designed to hold, uh, up to three right now, uh, so Verizon, AT&amp;T.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of this rezoning? Please. State your name and address, please.
I'm Barry Pascal, excuse me, I live at eight-two-eight Jasmine Trail, if you saw the map, that's just north of this, uh, going out toward the river, uh, the Magnolia Ridge neighborhood, uh, we have, uh, approximately twelve homes, about thirty-four residents, I've lived there for almost twenty years. Cell service has, uh, has- Cell service has, has stunk the whole time we've been there, to the point that our original cell service that we had when we moved to the neighborhood, and they actually released us from the contract because they were able to show that you couldn't get cell service on our street. The only cable service we have on this street, because of when the utilities were put in, is from Xfinity or Comcast. And so the only way that our Verizon cellphone will work in here is with booster. Booster works off of your Wi-Fi network. So we've had a lot of construction lately on Fury's Ferry Road, and every time somebody nicks a cable, we lose not only cable, but we lose cellphone service as well. And so when I saw the heat map that showed how much this would spread up north of there, that's, that's pretty exciting for us in the neighborhood. All of my neighbors said the same thing. They all have to have boosters, they don't have a good cell signal, and that becomes a safety issue. People in our neighborhood are getting a little older, you know, and nobody has landlines anymore. So we do rely on the cell signals for that. And we also are excited about the fact that if we get another carrier, T-Mobile, Verizon, we'd potentially be able to get internet service from them instead of having to rely on Xfinity cable, and we'd have some competition in the neighborhood. That's all I have, and I appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you, Mr. Pascal. Anyone else in the audience like to speak in favor of this rezoning? Anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition to this rezoning? Come forward, just state your name and address.
I'm Mark Herbert. I'm the CFO of Riverview Church. I'm in favor of the tower. We thought it'd be a great idea for the community, and it's the perfect location for it. Everybody in our church is excited about it. So hopefully, it's going to help everyone. We're definitely in favor.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to this tower? Please, come forward and just state your name and address, please.
West, I live at 1236 Fury's Ferry, right next door to the adjacent lot. My question's more about the setback. Is this the appropriate time to talk about that?
Yes.
Technically, next. I just want to know what safety precautions are, you know, more in effect, because my family's the one that's most affected due to relative distance.
The tower fell.
Yes.
I understand that the towers will collapse if they do fall.
Okay. That works for me. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question for the person putting the tower in. Is there a distance, dead zone distance, from where the actual antennas are directly underneath that antenna?
Yeah, usually if you're right underneath the tower, you're gonna, you're still going to have no service. But as soon as you radiate or move outside of the...
Or distance, usually where that starts?
Uh, I would have to look at the...
Hundred yards.
Yeah, I would have to look more, more in detail on like a EMF study.
Okay.
For the, for this particular wireless carrier to know those details.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been in the industry for over 10 years and done site visits, and you're at a tower doing work, you usually have any service because you're right underneath it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Can I get a motion for this rezoning?
Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of file RZ 24-09-06, rezoning from R1 to S1 for a cell tower, acre portion of the property at 1238 Fury's Ferry Road.
A second. All in favor? Carries?
Yes, sir. So this is a, an application for a variance to tower setbacks at the exact same location we just reviewed. Again, this is the location. This is the zoning map, aerial for the site, plat, and the site plan. So again, the setbacks for towers are actually set by the tower's own height per Columbia County Code. So in this case, it's 150-foot tall tower, so it, per code, has 150 feet foot setbacks. In this case, they're not meeting those setbacks as shown by the distances here on the site plan. They're short a couple feet. They're short about 40 feet in one spot, and then they're short about 75 feet in another. The most important thing that's included with their application to address these concerns and kind of to help, you know, address any issues there might be, is an explanation that the tower is designed with a greater, I guess, wind resistance capacity below a certain height. In this case, it's the bottom, I believe, 63, 67, I think, feet of the height are, you know, built at a higher grade than, you know, wind capacity should reach for any kind of catastrophic wind event like a tornado. And then the top 83 feet of the tower are, you know, constructed, you know, with less wind resistance. And the reason that's done per, you know, a fall letter that's included by the engineer that's designing the tower is so that in the event of a catastrophic, catastrophic wind event, the tower would fold over and fall within a 49-foot radius per, again, that fall letter from the engineer designing the tower. That 49-foot fall radius would fall within the lease area as shown on the site plan. That would be, again, well away from any property lines to any adjacent parcels. It should, you know, address, hopefully, for everybody involved, any safety concerns in that regard. Again, that fall letter was included with the submission, so it's, you know, an engineer drew it up for us. I can't speak to the engineering more than, you know, the engineer designing the tower himself. Again, included with that application were also the same propagation maps and also the same photo simulations, just to address location concerns with the tower. And as we discussed during the rezoning, staff is comfortable with the location, comfortable with the explanation regarding safety should the tower fail, and so staff is recommending approval of this application for the variance as well.
Thank you. Godwin, you want to maybe clarify about how the tower would collapse if it catastrophic winds?
It's, it's basically exactly what Mr. Douglas stated. In case of a hurricane or high-force winds, the top section of the tower is designed. If it does, which is very unlikely to fail, it'll just fold over kind of on itself and in itself, then fall straight into inside the instant area of the compound.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you, sir. Any in the audience in favor of this variance like to come forward and speak? Audience in opposition to this variance like to come forward and speak? Motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of file VA 24-09-08, variance to reduce required setbacks for a cell tower at 1238 Fury's Ferry Road.
Second that.
All in favor? Carries? Montgomery?
Yes, sir. This was a request for a variance to Section 90-135 signs at 5170 Columbia Road. This property is at the intersection of Columbia Road and Lewiston Road, is currently zoned C2 general commercial. This shows the aerial of the site. It doesn't look quite like this anymore if you've driven through here recently. It is under construction for a Parker's gas station, so it looks more like this right now. This application was in regards to the canopy signs, which are intended to be placed on the short ends of the canopy, as you can see here on their sign plan. And the request was in regards to increasing the square footage of these signs. The applicant did request to withdraw this application yesterday, which is why I'm going through it kind of quickly. So we are recommending accepting the applicant's request to withdraw.
Thank you. The applicant here would like to... Have anybody in the audience who would like to, kind of in favor of this variance? Anybody in the audience like to speak in opposition to this variance? Get a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice of file VA 240902, variance to increase the square footage of the canopy signs at 5170 Columbia Road.
Second. All in favor? Carries? Butler?
The sheriff's request for a variance for a location at 464 and 47 North Bel Air Road and also 42390 Hereford Farm on 2.67 acres, currently zoned C1 neighborhood commercial, also within the Evans Town Center Overlay District. Variance is to remove the maximum building setback in Evans Town Center Overlay. Shows the location of three properties, is going to be the old Fats Building. That building is now gone. Been by there recently. And current zoning is C1. You've got some C1 across the street, and either side of you have a planning and development to the south. You have some residential and some more, and some P1 as well. There's aerial view of the site, and also the plat of the property a while back. Again, site currently, but this was, again, you got the, the tracker ready to go over here. So the overall concept plan, they're proposing to build a freestanding ER on the property. And the issue you have is you've got three roadways over here. You've got Bel Air Road, Hereford, and then Marie Street. And within Evans Town Center Overlay, you have a five-foot minimum setback basically up against the road. You have a maximum setback where basically your building envelope has to touch. Problem is, is this basically forms this kind of thing looks like that. So your building has to somehow hit all of this. And you, you could do it. It'd be, you could make it happen, but it's one that it would make for a very odd-looking building or a much larger building in this situation. They have been able to hit the Hereford Farm on max building setback on either side of it. Really can't make it work with two arterials and a, and a local street on, on, that you're dealing with from a building setback standpoint. So due to all of that, staff is comfortable with everything. We do have a condition with it, requiring the subject parcels to be combined, pretty typical for a submitted with a construction plan and all that. Again, prior to approval of the site plan for the subject properties, that includes staff recommendation.
Thank you. Frank? Board? Okay.
I'm Jay Castor. I am designer of the project. So we agree with Will that very difficult to try to meet all the setbacks required, you know, with ambulance entry on one side, everyone else entry on the other side, stormwater basin on the ambulance side. Find it's difficult to meet setback requirements. The existing site, similar. There was no variance.
Thank you.
So the road behind, I didn't...
So that is currently, it's a dead end. It goes into the large gray building at the end of that, I can't remember the name of that building, but anyway, it goes into that. There is, what was it?
Legacy building.
Legacy, there we go. There has been discussions in the past about Marie Street becoming basically a driveway. Right now, it's a county road. It was designed, this, this portion of it was designed to county specs for the most part. But again, it gets real small once you get past here. So it's one that that over time might go back to the property owners, the basin to it. But right now, county road, and it doesn't go to the, it goes through, but not as a road the whole way through.
Any in the audience like to speak out in favor of this variance? Any in the audience like to speak out in opposition? Their motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with condition file VA... Five variance.
Second. All in favor? Carries? Butler?
The sheriff's request for variances at 3530 Evans to Locks, currently zoned R2. Realize some variance to signs and also place some buildings and structures to permit a fence wall over three feet in height when the front building setback, and signs that see in square, six square feet to remain on the property. This is the case on the property on the south side of Evans to Locks. This property is within Westlake. It is not behind the gate, obviously, but it is part of their covenants. We'll kind of be talking about that here in a moment. Again, currently zoned R2 is everything on the south side of the road is. North side is zoned R1. That is going to be a, up for discussion here in a moment when we start looking at the fence or wall. Probably need to be consistent with what we call it, so we'll call it a wall from now on. There's aerial view of the site, again, very large house, just completed back in June. And the plat of the property. So the issue we're dealing with, uh... The issue we're dealing with is this very large wall at the front of the property. Within R2, you have a maximum, if you're basically in front of your front building setback, is a three-foot high fence. That's, that's what you're allowed to have. This thing is nine foot four, give or take, at this corner here. If you're in an R1 zone property, as is across the street, you have an eight-foot high fence all up to your property line. That's where, very different ways of looking at it. However, this property is more akin to an R1. It is one acre in size. It does have a septic system. R2, you could have down to basically a quarter acre lot, and it has sewer. So it's more similar what's across the street than what it, what it, what it currently is. Again, large, large wall, it's been construction on the property, nine feet at that corner. It does kind of go down as the grade changes across the front of the site, probably averages out to seven feet overall. On the side there, that is higher than six feet at multiple locations. It also is part of the request as well. That goes down both sides. We'll see both sides here in a moment. The other part of this, are these two signs here? We'll have a more close-up picture here in a moment. Within a residential property, you're allowed to have a six-square-foot sign, basically a real estate-sized sign. These are both 13 square feet apiece around. We're dealing with 26 square feet, well over that requirement or that, that, the permission there. And again, on this side, we're looking at the other side of the, of the front of the property. This is the, the shorter side for talking about the heights of, of the wall itself. Again, it does turn the corner and go further down. This side of the wall, it is unfinished on this side, and that is both the, the wall itself, but also the grating is unfinished. It has not been, it, it's dangerous to walk around over there, is what I'm getting at. So in terms of this shows a close-up of the, the, the sign that's been put in place. Didn't, did not get a picture at night. It is lit as well. That is not permitted. So we're dealing with multiple things on it. This shows kind of the unfinished nature, you know, this needs to be filled in. And again, the, the wall itself is block. That is one of the things that technically meets our requirements, and I mean Westlake's, where there's some, some discussion. So overall, we have two different, basically paths going on right now. We have our variances that are at play. We also have Westlake's covenants that are at play. Westlake's covenants are very much more restrictive than ours, than our, than our ordinances. However, there is a variance that's being requested. There could be some back and forth with that. So we do recommend postponing this request to allow some time for, for Westlake to work on their side of it. Now, the issue is, is after consultation with the county attorney, we're only allowed to postpone action from you guys for 30 days. So we can only postpone until basically the October 17th meeting. That's, that's as long as we can postpone this. That'll likely give us some time for, hopefully, something to happen, but if it doesn't happen, then we'll continue moving forward with our side of it. And Westlake is on their own to do their thing with their covenants. That includes staff recommendation.
Thank you. The hotels like to come forward here? Is there anyone out in the audience that is in favor of this variance of multiple sections? Anyone in the audience that is in opposition to this variance of multiple sections? Please come forward and state your name. And if, you know, once we have heard all the different reasons, you know, we don't have to repeat the same reason, if that's okay.
Hi, I'm Melissa Wilkes. I'm an attorney for Westlake Property Owners. So I just was making appearance tonight. We understand the 30-day timeframe, so we're good with that. We're in favor of postponing it to give us more time to, Mr. Patel has multiple violations. He's not a member of his standing. Trying to slowly work through that. A hearing.
Thank you. Thank you. One else in opposition like to come forward? Just state your name and address.
Hey, Jay Cozey. I live on the west side, the side that has not been finished. Promises you everything in the world until he gets it done. Finished his side and told me more or less, it's his, he was threatened. Left his ditch open. I got water running under the fence, onto my driveway. I fixed that myself. I can't get him to do anything. So I mean, completely don't want it done.
Thank you. Come forward, just state your name and address, please. Come forward, just state your name and address, please.
Bob Norland, thirty-five twenty-six. On one side, I'm on the other. I'm on those ten foot set, that one. I wanna correct you, I think he was talking. My side's not finished either. Totally out of code. But I wanna back up a little bit. Cause for five years I've been dealing with this and nobody in this room. I've had dynamite in my property. I've had, I used to have a fence started about halfway up there. They dug a trench along the side of the property, lapsed it. HOA, Westlake sent me the letter. I responded with what was going on. I ended up paying. French that talking about? I didn't do it. My property, my mom. Lives in the pool house, which is just to the left of that picture. Car is literally parked. You can actually see it in that picture. Yeah, and she's ninety-three. Hole like this. Starts at that corner, but not anymore. It starts really right where the driveway is, all the way down my property. Built his fence up against what left part, what part of my fence is still left. Only painted the exposed part, not the rest of it. I also tell you, if you send out people to look at it, doubt it's gonna be code. Only block, mortal lines aren't even. Holes you can stick your finger in. There's more. I could sit here and go on. I gave point, bullet points to Westlake. Since we're specifically talking about this, I'll stick to it. Not as worried about the height, but that's what I believe that we ought to do whatever the policy is. Going to the sign, I joked with Mark Herbert a minute ago. I hung up a Mark Herbert billboard. It was a billboard, I want to know. I got a letter, again, from Westlake about my sign. Probably about the same size as that. The other thing, just so everybody here is understood, backlit sign. My property looks like a football. Has street lamps that are already switched. Property is lit up. Really took, what the contractor told me when. Mom lives, again, right there in that little white peak. Just pointing some of that stuff out. Postponed, I know Westlake's found it five years after. But, uh. I, my property, you know how big that is? All the houses in the pictures. My house is nine thousand square feet and it looks like apartment now. But that's fine. Again, it's, it's beautiful. Uh, yeah, I have no problems with that, but I just want some of these things to HOA and the county. Fit for me.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak out in opposition to this? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make. File VA twenty-four dash zero-six, zero-nine dash zero-six, variance is to increase allowed fence height line allowance for the property at thirty-five thirty Evans to Locks Road, October seventeenth. Planning commission.
Second. Favor? Hearings? Douglas?
Yes, sir. So this is an application for a, a variance to several sections, uh, at four, five, eight, six Coldwater Street. Uh, this shows the location of the parcel. It'll be a little more clear here in a moment. This is the zoning map. Uh, the parcel's zoned R2, but it's a largely residential area. Uh, it's specifically a part of the retreat at Baker Place. This is the plat for the parcel. And this is an aerial of the parcel. Um, as you can see here, again, this parcel's a part of the retreat at Baker Place and the code sections that we're looking, that the applicant is looking for a variance to, um, establish a buffer along all exterior roads to residential developments. Uh, in this case, Baker Place Road here on the right of the screen. And you can even see, uh, there, the buffer established in this area is 50 feet wide. Uh, another code section establishes a 10-foot setback off of that buffer. Well, I believe we can see that best when we view the concept plan. This is the existing site, the existing home on the property. And this is, uh, the proposed concept plan. The applicants effectively want to build a pool in their backyard. Again, 50 feet of their, uh, backyard space is buffer and then an additional 10 feet beyond that is setback off of the buffer per Columbia County Code and the zoning history on the parcel. Um, the applicants are seeking to reduce, uh, both the setback and the buffer along that lot line abutting Baker Place Road to 20 feet. If you saw on the aerial, that is the existing buffer that's been established. Uh, we don't know that the 50-foot buffer has ever been fully installed or, uh, planted, anything like that. So effectively, uh, what they're asking for is to use their backyard in its existing state and as it has existed for years. This is a view from Baker Place Road. And so, uh, those code sections are in place to try and ensure that there isn't, uh, access uh, from within those, basically to buffer the residential developments from the busy exterior roads that serve those developments. Um, as you can see here, the buffer between the fence and the exterior planning beyond the fence accomplishes that visual goal. And so granting the variance is not gonna negatively affect Baker Place Roads, uh, you know, visual, uh, view shed or, you know, streetscape. Um, and so staff is in support of the application and recommending approval of their request.
Thank you. Kevin and Tony like to come forward? Anybody in the audience in favor of this variance of multiple sections? One in the audience in opposition to this variance? Okay. Motion, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of file VA two-four dash oh-nine dash oh-seven, variance is to reduce the buffer and setback requirements at forty-five eighty-six Coldwater Street.
Second. Favor? Hearings? Have any legal item, items today?
Not yet. Open, not, not ever, but not yet.
Any, any staff and commissioner comments? More public comments? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Chair? Thank you for.